If we could take our seats, please. Thank you. Hey, how are you? Let me scoot down a little bit. This meeting come to order at 7:00 PM. Lauren, can you please take the roll?
Everyone's present.
Okay, great. We have time for guest comments if anybody wants to come up front. Yeah, up the microphone. Announce yourself and your address, please.
Good evening, this is Jill Love. I'm at 311 Caleb's Court. And something I just wanted to bring to the board just for future consideration, hopefully sooner than later, but as we realize that we have a lot of growth coming and standards of the homes that we would like there, you know, tend to just be always a very big topic of conversation, what kind of materials, what's the look, feel, all of that. I think there's a lot of congruity about how we want this village to look and how we want it to grow and the styles of homes and things that we would like. So I'd like to see if Zoni would like to consider, again, at your discretion, a design committee, a design standards committee. So I have talked with other areas that started this way many years ago when they were kind of in our position and they had a design review board, really. And so it would start with having an architect and having, you know, various people involved in that process. I know it's not necessarily a cheap process, so, but it is something that perhaps we could look at funding, at instituting that type of funding as we move forward because I think that's going to be really important. And, you know, it always is a conversation in zoning when a developer comes here and wants to do a certain type of material or a certain look of the house. But I think if we have a design code that basically, and I know we have certainly things in place, don't get me wrong with that, this really takes that a whole step further by having a design review board and having an architect that can really help kind of identify who we are. I mean, Michelle, you brought up in the past about Galena being a brickyard and utilizing more brick in our architecture here. So just something to think about and to consider. That's all, that was all my two cents.
Thank you. Jill, I think that's a great idea and it would make it easier for us when people want to build as we're actually addressing some issues about demolition tonight. Thanks.
Thank you, Jill. Appreciate it. All right, we invited Crossroads Community Planning in tonight. Last, sorry, last meeting, we distributed this diagnostics report that the firm had done, so tonight they are here to just present that to us and so we can ask questions and kind of go through this a little bit together. So I guess we'll turn it over to, it's Ben, right?
Yeah.
Great.
So hello, everybody. My name is Ben Harder. I'm a planner with Crossroads Community Planning. A little bit about myself, I born and raised in Ohio, went to school at Denison University, have a bachelor's in political science and environmental studies, and then went over to University of Oregon School of Law to get a JD with a concentration in environmental law where I also was exposed a lot to Oregon's land use system and zoning laws. And I wanted to come back to Ohio and be a part of, you know, all the growth and making sure that we're growing smart, community in mind. So really excited to be part of this process here in Galena. I'm joined here with Kelsey, who is a planner as well here at Crossroads. I don't know if she wants to introduce herself right now.
Hey, everyone, just real quick. Kelsey Miller with Crossroads. I have been on the team for, since April, but I'm very familiar with Galena and the Delaware community. I started my career in economic development for the city of Delaware and then transitioned to Delaware County in their economic development department. And I have practiced economic development for a good majority of my career. This last year, I dabbled in a little bit of private development and building commercial and historic preservation, but I got that, I still had the itch for community development, so I had to come back. So this has been a really fun experience to come back and work with communities like Galena and other Delaware County communities, too. So, thank you. I'll pass it back to Ben.
So, so as you know, like the diagnostic report is pretty extensive. It's about 30 pages long and so we don't want to go page by page, line by line today because that'll take up most of this evening. So for purposes of this presentation, we're going to really emphasize the summary at the end of the document and then go article by, just provide general recommendations article by article, but then there will be slides that delve into further detail where we feel like that is especially necessary. So looking, sorry, this is, is this working? It was working just a second ago. Oh, oh, there we go. Okay, so it's a little bit small for the people sitting in the back, but...
Do you have a page?
What we're seeing here is the existing code on the left-hand column, the recommended... Oh, sorry.
Is this working? Okay, sorry, it wasn't working. Do you have a page number that we can reference for the summary where it starts?
Yes, so you can go to page... It is on page, on page 20.
They're very, very faint.
Yep, so what we're seeing here on this table is the existing code on the left-hand side, the recommended code in the middle, and just some notes on the right. And so with the existing code, starting off with title, purpose, the carte blanche language that we see in every sort of zoning code, our recommendation straightforward, just kind of combine articles one and two because that's generally what you find in zoning codes, is making sure that title, purpose, interpretation, conformities, and then also the severability and repeal sections found in Article 10 are all under one umbrella, just to keep that simple. But for Article 3, administration and enforcement, this is where we have a lot more extensive recommendations, of course. So first and foremost, it is recommended that we just split administration and enforcement into two separate articles, just to keep, just to keep that separate because otherwise it's a rather large article that covers a lot of ground and we want to make sure that this is a user-friendly code at the end of the day. So looking, thinking about administration and enforcement, beyond just separating the two, we want to make sure that each role in the government here is clearly defined and has step-by-step procedures for each entity. In the existing code, it seems that your planning commission and BZA are a joint group and that, am I correct in that understanding? Board of zoning appeals, what you would do for your administrative and legislative functions. So you, yeah, so in your, in your existing code, there's, it defines that, but I think that it just needs to go a little bit further to make sure that it's clear as to where the legislative and administrative functions are occurring. And then throughout the code, making reference to that, to just make it clear that this is the legislative part, like you're acting as a legislative group versus an administrative group, just to make sure that you're like protecting yourself legally. And then making sure that for the same thing with the zoning clerk and zoning inspector, making sure that those roles are clearly defined and having step-by-step processes for their responsibilities. Additionally, for enforcement and the violation procedures, we recommend just adding additional information regarding entry and inspection, stop work orders, which I know is located elsewhere in the code, but just making sure that's all under the enforcement umbrella. And then also, realizing that's a little bit cut off on this one, at the bottom is talking about the escalating citation schedule. So right now in your existing code, we felt that your existing escalating citation schedule was a little bit too severe, but there's a way that we can manage that to make it more gradual. So thinking of it as the first citation, you have a minor misdemeanor and $150 and then it escalates up bit by bit. So after the second citation, that's a fourth degree misdemeanor and $250. And it's just a gradual buildup instead of, as it is in the existing code, facing incarceration after the second offense. We felt that that was a little bit too serious. And what we also like to encourage is providing visual examples. So providing clear line, like choice trees and timelines as to how these procedures operate. So having an enforcement flow chart is super helpful to show not just the zoning inspector and the people who are working in the government, but also to help with residents and anybody else who's experiencing a violation, what sort of things, to summarize the enforcement, showing citations and then the time between and how it loops back around. Just things like that are very, very helpful. So got through that. Now with zoning certi, next couple articles, zoning certificates, amendments, appeals and variances. So with the zoning certificate article, we feel like it could be effective to merge zoning certificates, conditional uses and demolition permits since we know that that's an important goal of the villages to include demolition permits. So just to have that all in one space where somebody can go find the permits and the procedures involved with that, we feel like that's probably the most user-friendly option. With amendments, there's not much to talk about that. We think that just general rewording, promoting clarity, things like that. It's not so structurally that we are recommending change in that section, although I did see that there was a lot of discussion of development plans in the amendment article. I think it would be good to keep amend, the development plans to the planned districts just so we are not confusing people with, who are just pursuing standard amendment procedures. But with the appeals and variances, once again, with appeals, we didn't have much feedback on that, but with variances, what I would like to see and recommend is that we make sure that we are clearly defining, defining what a use and area variance is. So right now in your existing code, you're, you have references to the practical difficulty test and the unnecessary hardship test. Those are two different types of variances under legal interpretation. So we want to make sure that you're aware of that. And the use variance is, is where the property owner wishes to utilize a use not available in the existing district. We usually, as a firm, we usually don't recommend that because it subverts the legislative process. But if you want to have a use variance, we can still utilize the unnecessary hardship test involved with that. We just want to make sure that that's clear. And then with area variance, that's more of what you generally see with the practical difficulties test. And that's where the property complies with the permitted uses, but the lot or the building does not conform to the regulations, the regulated lot size or setbacks. And that test is not so strict as unnecessary hardships, but it's, it's still, we want to make sure that that test is listed out in the zoning code so that's very clear as to what an applicant needs to meet. And so we don't have, and so we have a process where, where anybody submits an application for a variance, they can still have a predictable outcome, you know, every time. And then also introducing visuals as always. But this is to give you an idea of the two different tests involved. So they're rather lengthy, but it would be, these tests here would be how they would appear in the zoning code. So I just wanted to provide that sort of list. And I think those lists are provided in the report as well, so just trying to make that abundantly clear. And then this is an example of a timeline of just showing, you know, what we could work with of having, you know, the board, upon receiving a completed application, they have 30 days to review it and set up a public meeting and then holding that public meeting and then making that decision. So things like this throughout the code just really helps go along the way to, to just help show people as to what sort of timeline they could be predicting when they're trying to submit an application for a variance or appeal or anything like that. So this next part of the presentation, we are going to be talking about non-conform, conditional uses, non-conforming uses, and that severability and repeal, which I already recommended is, should go under Article 1. So I think I already kind of belabor the point with the conditional uses, having all of the permit, all those sorts of permitting processes under one article to really help user-friendliness of the code. And then with non-conformities, the primary recommendation for that beyond just general wordsmithing is that we would want to make sure that we're updating those conditions for non-conformities to make sure that they're fitting in with what we're seeing across central Ohio. So abandonment and disuse, the period right now we felt was a little bit too long. We think that that can be shortened to just one year to be considered abandoned. And then with, we also want to make sure that the timeline for commencing work for a restoration of non-conforming uses adjusted to make more sense and be a little bit more clear as to when that starts and stops. And we also want to make sure that we're cleaning up any sort of loopholes, not just for non-conformities, but in the code in general. So making sure as we're listing these sorts of timelines out, that it's very clear as to when one starts and one stops and trying to make sure that this code is as watertight as possible. And now I will turn it over to Kelsey to talk about zoning districts and our recommendations in that regard.
Ben? I get to talk about my favorite parts. I lucked out, and that is kind of zoning districts and how they are set up. So of course, we want this code to be as user-friendly as possible. You have residents looking at it, you have your staff looking at it, and you have developers looking at it. So making sure that it is as easy to interpret as possible is top of the line of importance. And so we'll give you a little, we'll give you a few examples of how we think that, some suggestions of how we might make it a bit more visually appealing and with some, with additions of different graphics. So starting out, just measurements in general, we noticed just a lot, just not too many visuals and we think especially with standard lots, obviously it's great when we have a perfect rectangular square, but with those irregular lots and kind of really laying it out of different measurements with those setbacks to, especially for residents, have a better idea of how maybe they need to be working with their architect or their team if they're looking to build a custom home or do any kind of ADU or so on and so forth there. So this is just one example. Here, oop, here is another example of what it could look like if we're looking for more of, more color to it, a little more zazz in that way. But moving on here, another suggestion, too, is to add a use table so that when people are skimming, they're not only trying to identify their district, but also, you know, if they're coming into the community with a specific use, maybe it'd be best to have all of the uses together in one table so that you know exactly where, what districts you should look out for, for permitted or conditional use, which we, or accessory structures, which we have here. So this is just one example from one of our other communities of how that would be laid out in the code. So moving on here, so this is a table that Ben put together in terms of suggestions of how we want to, how we would suggest going about the different districts. And it, a lot of that is a bit more, changing a bit more on the lot sizes and the minimum frontage. So we just want to make, go down the line here, our F1, our FR1, the farm residential district, we recommend changing that simply to our ag district. The minimum frontage with the current use, with the current district is very streamlined. It's very particular, just based on the amount of acreage you have for the frontage with a minimum lot size of one acre. So our suggestion is to, again, change the district name from farm residential to just agriculture districts. Keep that one acre minimum lot size, but simplify that minimum frontage to 100, 150 feet across the board. And then the other suggestion that we had to, added to our notes was to utilize this district as a holding district for the village in terms of any kind of annexation. So if there are any properties that are annexed, it's automatically added to agriculture and then later amended to a more appropriate district for that use. And then R2, as we have it, we know that the district name in Galena is low-density residence district. We like that name, we're going to keep it. We like, we like that one. But currently, the minimum lot size is 28,000 square feet with 100-foot minimum frontage. Our suggestion is to pare that down from 28,000 to 15 and lowering that minimum frontage to 90 feet, again, to be a bit more competitive with some other areas that are seeing certain kinds of development and just trying to meet in between with the development community in that way. In terms of the notes, so again, these adjustments better kind of reflect the economic trends that we're seeing out there. And it also makes it a bit easier for development to happen to really accommodate the needs that we hear about from a regional perspective in terms of housing. So working from that angle is kind of our reasonings for the changes in these numbers for, for that. I, it's hard to see where, it's so, it stinks when we, when the formatting doesn't match, match up because the other one here that isn't seen on, on the screen right now is your Old Town Historic Overlay District. So as of right now, there's no minimum lot size, no minimum frontage. We have no changes to that. That makes sense, especially with how, you know, we want it to be walkable, we want the buildings up pretty close to the sidewalks. We do have a suggestion of changing the name to Historical Village District. And then we do have a few suggestions in terms of how we want to lay that, suggestions of maybe some ways that we, that it could be improved or just better accommodating the goals that we have for, in the community. And some of those were, the big one is currently there's an overlay in this district and one suggestion that we have would be to remove the overlay qualification and establish it as its own district. This would make it overall easier to kind of control in terms of how development would look because as of right now, if it's in an overlay, they can either pull down that cloud or they can keep the same standards. Ben touched on the demolition permitting process and maybe possibly creating a more holistic demolition permit process independent of that historic village. So that was another thought that we had. And then one, and then another thing, just as I'm kind of skimming through this, the standards for infill construction should differ from those that are renovation of existing structures because right now that's not quite represented in the text right now. So that could be something that could be kind of put into more specifics here in the next round. And so with that, we'll change it to our next one here. And then we did, we do have what I think could be provocative suggestion, but we thought, we have a lot of planned districts here. What if we did one planned unit district instead of several different ones? I know from a development perspective when I was my short stint in private development.
Can you explain that a little further, planned versus...
Sure, yes, of course. Great question. So we kind of, we think of the planned districts as kind of a build it, build it as you'd like and then there's a lot of different processes that go through your zoning commission as well as the council to streamline and approve a lot of the text that the developer would come up with. So the developer would come, would approach and say, okay, we want to build the text and we want to build out setbacks to look like this. This is the development that we would like this to be. Here's a zoning text, surveys, there's a whole slew of different things that usually come with that to create its own independent development plan. So it's not exactly rogue because you can still set certain standards in your planned districts of, okay, we definitely don't want this much of a, we don't want this large of a setback or we don't like this or that. But currently, as you have it right now, you have one that's, you have several that are very similar but different in terms of residential, commercial, here I'm trying that, here I got to see it, too. And you have one for mixed use, one for commercial and office, one for industrial, one for community facilities, one for planned recreation. So there's a lot of similar but different ones. So there's different standards for all of those planned districts.
Would this give the developer more latitude to, to have smaller lots or multifamily or that type of situation?
Not necessarily. Again, a lot of that development text is brought to the zoning commission, recommended for approval to the village council, and then the village council would, you know, could make modifications or changes in that way.
My concern is, is that if we put something in the language, and I have read some places in this process, that it's for multifamily, tries, buys, all that. I don't think that's going to work for this area and I don't want to give loopholes to developers to be able to use that. And that's, you know, that's how business works. I own rental property, I know how things go. I don't want to give them that in. If we want to do that, yeah, okay, we can make, we can change it. But I don't want to give them the right to come in and say, oh, but your zoning says this. And I've talked to Jeff about this in depth, anywhere in that document. And so I think we need to have our latitude as Galena because we don't know how we're going to grow. And this is a long-term plan that we're doing here. And I have another question. Could we actually, you're talking about numbers and this and that, and I'm old for God's sakes. But would it be possible to put like the zoning for codes that we have with like, you know, dimensions and everything on a piece of paper and compare it to what you're doing? I know you want to change the footage back to, from, you know, 90, from 100 to 90. Okay, got it, big deal. But then a lot of times, that larger 100-foot gives you, gives you room to deal with the developer and make, you know, and say, okay, we'll do this. It's, you know, you're negotiating.
So can you go in a little bit more of like giving room for the, you're talking in terms of negotiation in that way, like, okay, if we do 90, then we're, if they want 70, then we're going to have to meet even more in the middle. Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, now, I just don't legally want any builder, anyone to come in here and say, oh, no, it's in your, it's in this plan and we will do it. And so that's my biggest concern. And that I won't fall for.
Understood. Well, would there be any flexibility because right, right now you do have a planned mixed use district, which I believe includes multifamily in that.
Well, actually, I'm going to talk about that, too. When they did the mix, when you did the little dots, you know, would like come over here and do the dots, it was my first day here, too. And I talked to Seth and some other people and Seth, this is true, right? And first of all, the maps were impossible to read, okay? And I had not looked at one. Second of all, I had no idea what my residents wanted because I had no time to talk to them. And I've talked to a few people on council who felt the same way on zoning. So that mixed use map or that map that we did really doesn't have any credence. And I can tell you, I, I felt that way, I think, I know Seth did. And, you know, so, so the numbers we're using for this really probably aren't correct because we did not know.
Correct in the sense of not represent, representative, would you say?
Well, yeah, we put dots, I wasn't going to say, well, does anyone else know this? They didn't. Because the maps were vague, so we had all these little dots, which I would have rather had time to go and talk to people about it.
Sure. There's a lot to take in.
No, it's impossible to take in.
Yeah.
So therefore, the numbers you're dealing with, I do not think have a real basis. I think we need to relook at that because, again, we were not warned and it just showed up that night.
Can I make a comment? What you're referring to is the work that was done with growth strategy, which is neighborhood, neighborhood strategies? So it's, it's a different group.
Right, oh, I know.
They're not the ones that did that, that work with us, just so you clarify on that.
I was going to say, we do a lot of education up front. There is a lot of education that needs to go in, especially something like a zoning code.
So Kelsey, can I ask on this topic we're on?
Yes.
This consolidation of all these districts. I'm just curious how that operates in practice, if you've seen that, because it feels like we're putting all the Legos in one box.
Sure.
And we're letting the developer move those around where at least we have the opportunity to here to fit them in something that is more, you know, acceptable to...
Right, you're putting them in at least the same color of Lego piles.
So have you actually seen this in practice where they do that?
I have, but I think Ben has, Ben, this is definitely his wheelhouse, so I'll let him speak to it. him speak to it.
Yeah, so most planned unit development districts, they are, they are a comprehensive thing where you see residential, commercial, mixed-use, industrial, all under one thing. But the big, it's not that they can just take and choose and all that. There's still a development plan process involved with this. It's just that since you're not really, you're not marking on a zoning map, planned unit development, you know, that's not, that's not what happens with a zoning map. So by having it all differentiated in that way, it doesn't really add, it doesn't really help you in terms of a zoning code. Because at the end of the day, you're still going to have to have the development plan, the structure of the application expectations. And within that, you're making sure that multi-use, multifamily has to fit certain categories in terms of track size.
But Ben, it feels like it helps us, right? That's kind of where, it feels like it helps us because we're putting some structure out there where a developer can come and say, well, you know, we think we're fitting into this structure. And then we have like the ability to kind of shape it from there. It just feels like if you put everything in a one basket, you don't have that structure and then it just becomes, well, which piece of the code are you talking about, right? Which side setbacks are you interested in? And you're pulling it from all these different areas, right? I just don't, doesn't feel like we would have the same control over that that we do today.
You'll have to come to me.
If you had to come down to the mic.
Zach Hopper, 275 Harrison Street. When I initially read this, my first thought process was, I believe the fact that they're separated is a safety net because they would, they would have to go through the rezoning process, which is intentionally a complicated procedure where we have a lot of control over that. So that way, we can separate the purpose of it.
So they, for a planned, you have to come to the mic.
Yeah, these are not very great mics.
So for a planned district, it's unlike a standard zoning district where, where they go through, you know, if they fit the qualifications of the lot and then they can build. They have, a developer has to come forward regardless of if it's separated or not separated. They have to come forward and submit a development plan that meets every qualification and expectation of the village. And, and that's a big thing that we want to really emphasize. I'm glad that Jill brought it up at the beginning of the meeting. We really want to make sure that we're updating this code to really fit into the building practices and standards and landscaping and everything that comes into with a big development. We want to make sure that that is well represented within the code so that it's abundantly clear as to what expectations you have here at the table. And so a planned unit development goes into much, much more detail than just a zoning district. You have to have landscaping, you have to have considerations for general development standards and all those sorts of things because it, it, I mean, as a planned district, you have to realize the developer is doing a big project in terms of, it might be a housing project, it might be a commercial project, or even an industrial project. And you want to make sure that they're fitting all of those qualities that you have for, as a community before they can even start to proceed. So I understand what you're saying as your concern, but at the same time, the zoning amendment application is separate from a planned district application. And it's purposely separate because it offers that higher level of detail.
Yeah, thank you. I think we can probably move on from this one.
I have one more question?
Of course.
Sorry, I confused the projects. Okay, but my question is, in this, you're going to redo the zoning for us and you're trying to make it easy on us, but is there multifamily in here?
So, so in your existing code, there's the multifamily planned district, which they would have to go through the development plan process to apply for. Right now, there is no existing zoning district that is high density or multifamily. So if that's something that you would want to consider introducing into a zoning code to make sure that you can define exactly where those things belong within the village, that's something we can consider, or we can just keep it as part of the development plan process where they have to come forward to you and say.
What if as a developer comes and we don't want the multifamily? We don't want tries and, you know, what if we don't want those?
Well, they, we, yeah, and then the application is denied. So, so like if you have a multifamily zoning and the multifamily zoning has lot, like lot sizes and all those sorts of expectations, and the developer comes up and says, well, this lot fits what we're looking for, for a multifamily designation, we would like to amend the zoning map and zoning to fit multifamily, there's very little you can do at that point because it meets that sort of expectation.
That's my question.
But with a PUD, they have to have a development plan, they have to come forward with, you know, the expectations that you have at the table. And if they don't meet those qualities, then that leaves you the room to deny it.
Yeah, there's more flexibility in that overarching versus how we have it now with a mixed-use district, harder to necessarily deny in that way because if it fits, if the shoe fits, then there's more of an argument for, well, this is part of your PUD mixed district text.
And that's my problem. I'd like not to have that in there.
Well, and that's why the suggestion of an overarching PUD, you can get a bit more flexible with, okay, will the design standards make it hard for you to place this use in this area in that way?
If you have an independent mixed-use PUD, then that almost opens up the door to say, hey, why are we not getting this plan accepted?
We don't, we don't have that in our code, right? So.
So, or multifamily, sorry. Or mixed-use.
So basically, what creating one large planned district does is it, in some ways, eliminates the idea of anything being permitted by right in the village.
Right, I mean, it just, it just makes sure that, you know, at the beginning of the planned, at the beginning of a planned unit article, you say, these sorts of uses are allowed, you know, residential, single-family, you know, commercial. And then you go into further detail as to how they can meet those, you know, meet those things to apply for that plan.
We have mixed use now in the golf course we just passed. But multifamily, you know, we don't have, we have too many cars here as it is. I mean, there's a lot going on here and packed into a very small space. And I don't want a developer coming in and saying, oh, we can fit it on here, so now we have to do it because it's in your code.
Right, I mean.
I just, I don't want that in the zoning.
Well, that's where you keep the things that say, you can only have X percentage of the project be multifamily or those standards have to stay.
And as we, as we're rewriting this, we want to make, you know, we'll present these sorts of standards and make sure that, hey, these are what we're looking for. Because right now, since it's so broad, you know, we could narrow it down even further and make sure that it's really fitting as.
Can we just take it out, not do multifamily, just do multipurpose?
Sure. I mean, we can work with that, but at the same time, there, I mean, there's a lot of development pressures surrounding central Ohio and, and, I mean, Galena, I feel, is at a great position to really, you know, determine its destiny. So we want to make sure that everything is accounted for. We want to be, we want to be having all the consideration.
Oh, I understand. A developer's going to do it if he wants to and can make money. That's it.
Right.
And multi-use is fine, but I.
Yeah, I mean, we, we don't want, what, I don't, as a Delaware County resident for basically all my life, I don't want to create a situation where your community is on the back foot and has to be, you know, appeasing a developer and, and you're not having that sort of autonomy that you should deserve as a village. So.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'll read the final when we get it and if it's in there, then I'll just look at it.
I mean, like, I didn't want to go and bloat the, bloat the report with, you know, line by line review, so, you know, yep.
And just for, yeah, and again, to go off Ben, this is just a diagnostic report of suggestions. This isn't a code rewrite at this point. We would love if you would be interested in us doing that. But at this point, that is, we are just observing and making those suggestions from here.
So real quick, Kelsey, so I guess underpinning this whole conversation.
Yes, sir.
I kind of like the fact we have all this separated, you know, planned districts. I kind of like that because I feel like I can understand that and fit a developer who's interested in working with us into one of those, right? Which we just went through that process, they got a couple of variances through the process, but ultimately, we knew where they were headed in terms of which, which one of these districts they were in. And then we have the general development standards, which you're moving to.
Yep.
So this is where I'm struggling a little bit. If our general development standards are broad enough to meet even what was just suggested earlier by Joe Love around Design Standard Committee, I'd be interested in what you think about that, have you seen that happen? And what are your, what's your advice about how we would do something like that?
I haven't been at the very beginning points of that, but I think that it's an excellent first step in terms of getting kind of a consensus together in that way. And not to keep feeding the same topic, but that, going back to Councilwoman Parsons' point of, we don't know how we're going to grow. And so having kind of the development standards kind of in place, but still in a flexible place is a good spot to be in, which is another great reason why we do love planned districts, even if we keep them in the buckets because we like those buckets. Ben, have you had any, have you had any experience in the inception of a design review board? Those are great. We do love working with them. And that doesn't mean that we can't, we have a lot of friends in high places that have been through this, especially in those cusp communities that are right on that suburban fringe of like big growth, right? So that is, that doesn't necessarily mean that we don't have a lot of input on that. We just got to get to our research, phone a friend.
So coming at this a little bit different way.
Sure.
Certainly, New Albany has design standards, Dublin has design standards. I think that's what we're talking about here is, you know, if it's, if it's brick on buildings, at least some portion of brick on buildings, which Michelle, you brought up the other month, that would, I think, come through potentially a committee like that, get approved through zoning, approved through council, into the zoning code, into the design, the development standards, I'm thinking. Does that sound right?
Those standards could be in the planned districts, they could be in the subdivision regulations. I mean, it's really, it doesn't necessarily have to be confined to just the general development standards, but if we're going to be considering creating a design review board, I would say that should just be an independent article altogether because that's so integral to the village at that point and just making sure that if a design review board is created, you have that procedure for its creation, the member, the membership and the sort of applications involved with that. That would be my thoughts. That's how other communities have done it with that.
Thank you, Jill Love, 311 Caleb's Court. Reason I had brought that up is I have a couple of friends who were on the origination of the New Albany Design Board. And the reason New Albany looks like it does is because of this board. They decided white fences, they decided brick, they put that whole design process in place. So as he mentioned, I said, you know, as far as getting started, having that architectural review, hiring an architect, hiring a landscape architect, it's all one full picture. So it's all, you know, in conjunction with our zoning code and it's, it is separate. And actually, those folks would then not only have to go through zoning, they'd have to go through the design board as well. So Alan Hinson was one of those persons, Hinson Amphitheater, don't know if you know that, in New Albany. Family owns a lot of New Albany, and so he sat on that board many years ago. And they decided that how they wanted New Albany to look. So I'm not comparing us to New Albany in any way, I'm just saying that we will want to have our own look, but that's how that was established. So you know when you're in New Albany. You know, there's a lot of areas in Dublin, you know when you're in Dublin. I don't even know if Dublin has quite the design board that New Albany does, they're quite known for that. So, but you know the minute you hit New Albany with those white fences that you're in New Albany. So it would be a very identifier, identifying process for us here in the village.
So we'll move on to our next here. So this is more, these next couple, my final slides are more format version of what pieces of our code would look like. We use the low-density residential as an example. So the code that we have today, very text-heavy, not, again, not too many visuals, that seems to be my theme. So this kind of gives more bullet points of what those purposes are as well as kind of giving inspirational photos. Again, this is very hypothetical, this is more for format than anything, but making sure that we incorporate a lot of tables and photos and illustrations to ensure that we're all on the same page. So here's something kind of about those development standards, kind of how that would be built out and more of a table form so that it's very easy to identify and for developers or residents to glance through and really understand what the intention is for those development standards as well as, as well as just making sure that it's visually appealing of what kind of information we're looking to get across. And again, just more examples of illustrations that we would use based on different setbacks, orientation of the buildings, and so on and so forth for that, as well as the depth. And then back, and then ultimately, again, going back to those general development regulations, breaking down those accessory structures, offenses, fire protection, landscaping, again, making it very table-heavy for different folks and staff to make it easy for them to view to. Last thing I'm going to cover is the Old Town Historic Overlay. So some recommendations that we had regarding this was to remove the overlay district qualification and establish a regular zoning district. Again, making sure that there's more consistency of, this is the district, there's no option of a pull-down of the cloud, this is how it is and this is what we want it to be. Emphasizing that facade preservation, we have some really beautiful buildings here. And how are we, how would we like to duplicate and expand upon that and some other structures here near, near and around this area? Establish the holistic demolition permit process as we talked about.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
About that, that second bullet?
Yep.
One of the major points of pushback we got when we've discussed this overlay in public is that trying to emphasize facade preservation is a burden on owners. Like, they don't, they want to just put up what they want, whatever's most economical and not worry about making it look good. So how are you saying that facade preservation actually helps relieve that burden? Because I'd love for that message to be spread more broadly.
Sure. And I think that there's different programs that can be utilized. I've seen different, like, different programs that are created by different communities to kind of help with that. And two, I'm unsure of how that conversation really unfolded, but I would, from what I understand, the facade is really important, especially in historic districts. So I would imagine that that would, that that would be a tough conversation to have with different owners.
On the basis of facade restoration, I mean, the big thing with historic preservation is people are concerned about, oh, you know, if I'm buying a historic home, what about the interior, what sort of upkeep am I going to have to do? By transitioning it more into, let's preserve the facade, emphasizing that. I mean, sure, it could still be burdensome, I mean, we're still working with historical buildings, but it's not going to emphasize so much the interiors or the rest of the building.
So my understanding of that district is that it does just emphasize the facade? Like, I don't think there's any guidelines that say interior has to come through zoning, so.
Okay, good, good. So I, I just know that from conversations we had in the past over the summer, that it was kind of just a point of sticking, I suppose, with facade, not trying to move away from that. And just, that was the notation there.
I had touched on this earlier. The other two are, you know, distinct approaches for infill construction and renovations. I think that's a really big one, especially for this district. And then just general updates. And then just general updates to the language to ensure it conforms with the design standards as, as we've been talking about as well. So from there, I get to throw it back to Ben to kind of finish us off here with our final point. So Ben, come on up.
All right, so we, we were almost done here. Just a little bit further to go. It's a lot better than going page by page, trust me. But we're, we're finishing up here with general development standards, parking, signs, and adult entertainment and definitions. So with general development standards, this is your catch-all article. So when somebody approaches, it's a great opportunity for the village to exert its sort of expectations that it has. So thinking of telecommunications towers, fences and walls, lighting, that are already existing articles, that should fall under the umbrella of general development standards. But I, I have a list on the next slide of other sort of considerations that, that should be included under this category. But, but right now, parking is under that Article 26, existing Article 26. And I think parking should honestly be, be taken out of that umbrella just because it, parking is just such an important aspect of the village work. We want to make sure that that's clear for people to find. So with, with general development standards, so things to consider such as accessory dwelling units, accessory units, making sure that the stance on cannabis stores are clear. Are they prohibited? Are they permitted? Making sure cemetery, chicken coops, community gardens, community mailboxes, swimming pools. Like, all these little things that are important to consider as a, as a village, you want to have that sort of standard down so that if somebody approaches you and says, hey, I want to have a swimming pool, they're able to go look and see what exactly is required in order to do that. And, and so it's really just an article of, of great convenience for everybody involved. And, and when it comes to the rewrite, since it is just such an umbrella article, we can really, I mean, this list is super amenable. If there are, if there are items that you feel that the village should include in terms of regulating, then we can add that to the list. If you feel that there are things that do not need to be present, we can remove that. So it's, every community is very, very different when it comes to their general development standards. And concerning parking, the, the only notes we have on this section is to make sure that we're including things such as parking lot islands. We don't want to create seas of asphalt. So it really helps provide landscaping opportunities and provides just a break, and it's generally, you know, nicer to have. Stacking requirements for drive-throughs, making sure that they don't interfere with traffic and things like that. For your downtown especially, we want to make sure that there are clear shared parking regulations and just making sure that we're listing all these things out clearly and, and concisely for, you know, for general user-freedominess. And these are examples of, of just renderings that we include in codes of just showing, you know, considerations for landscaping, of expectations if a tree is gonna be planted, how, how, you know, the caliper of it, and what a parking lot island looks like and things like that. And then as for signs, so signs are something that we are very particular about at crossroads. We really want to avoid creating constitutional issues where you're, you know, not following sign-based, you know, use, where you're at risk of violating the Constitution. So what we recommend for every community is to create a list of signs that you want available within the village. And then you create, and then you make sure that those signs are assigned to each district that you want them permitted in. And with each district, you have the ability to regulate, you know, the size and that maximum height and square footage. So it's all just very clear. So this example here on the slide is a projecting sign. So in this community, we had a, a village mixed-use, and we had the PUD as the only available places for projecting signs. And we have the regulations, expectations for village mixed-use, and since it's a planned district, that's a conversation they have to have through the development planning process. And associated with each sign, we want to have a rendering to show what that looks like and how it's measured. And so it's all very clear as to what we are regulating and talking about. So our recommendation for the sign article for your village is to make sure that we're just defining all the signs that we'd like, making sure it's all concisely organized in tables and having renderings associated with them so that it's clear as to what signs are being discussed. And that about wraps up. So with definitions, I mean, just making sure that we're updating definitions to reflect the uses and, and all the government entities that are involved with the community and all of that. But then all, right now, your adult entertainment is folded into your definitions. And we'd like to pull that out, just because that's a very important thing to pull out constitutional-wise, and also just what we see in all other zoning codes. And your, your adult entertainment facilities code right now is, is rather out of date. So we just want to make sure that that's adhering to Ohio Attorney General standards. And, and you know, there's, we can make sure that there's restrictions in place. We cannot zone it out, but we can make sure that it's fitting into the quality that you're looking for at least for the, for the village. And so that, that's that for the zoning code section of the diagnostic report. For the subdivision regulations, since it's very text-heavy, I don't want to belabor it too much tonight. But generally, we recommend, so right now in your existing code, you have the actual permitting, like the actual permits themselves in the document. We recommend pulling those out and just adopting them separately because it can be kind of a headache to, if your permit changes, then you have to amend the entire thing. So just keeping that separate is always just a general recommendation. Just improving language, step-by-step processes, as always, throughout this entire thing. And then there's a lot of repetition of, of regulations. So we don't want to make, we, we don't want to create confusion, you know, where it says referring to landscaping or enforcement or things like that. It'd just be easier to relate that back to the zoning code, just so we were not creating mess-ups. If one thing changes, then the other thing changes. Have it all just refer back to the zoning. And, and the biggest thing, I think, is making sure with design standards, that that's all very clear as what sort of expectations you have. And we feel that there's room for that to be updated. And since Galena is, is ready to really, I mean, it's really, Delaware County is exploding in development. So we really want to make sure that those standards are, are properly put in place so that you guys are feeling that change is not happening to you, but is integrating with you, and that it feels familiar to residents and does not feel like it's some foreign object. So, so that's, that's, that's our presentation. I don't, I'd be interested to hear about other final thoughts you may have, and any next steps.
In your experience, is there anything missing from our zoning code that was a major gap that you saw?
So, um, to go into, sorry, I have my touch of my mouse. So there, there were, I, I'd say the things that were missing were just making sure that it's clear as to what sort of procedural steps are in place. That was the thing that was really standing out to us as we were reading the code, is that procedure-wise, it needs to be expanded and clarified so that if somebody is going to submit something, they can expect a similar result each and every time. We don't want to create an arbitrary system. We don't want to create loopholes. So creating clear, concise steps with every, with every section that especially regards administrative work is, is super important. Trying to think of what else.
And you, and you outlined that, how, to how we could help with that with, with your recommendations?
I, in the recommendations, it, it does refer to some of the, some of those steps. I mean, it, it, it targets the sections that are especially needed. And then some of the things that we, we were able to spell out in the report, of course, I mean, we don't want to create a 70-page report, but the, at the very least, those things are targeted and labeled. Any other?
That was the biggest thing of, I have any questions of where does this lead back to? Am I understanding this correctly as a professional asking these questions? So that was a major, a major gap, and redundancy was a big one, and just confusion with that. So I think, again, simply, making it as simple and concise as possible was, was my biggest as well.
Yeah, and, and I suppose it's not really something that was missing, but there were things that could be just brought, brought up to the times, basically. Like, there were, there were a lot of outdated things that just need to be updated, not just econo, like, not just because of economic reasons, but just because of law and because of just organization and, and basic structuring like that.
Did you identify any areas where there was a conflict? Where it actually pointed to two separate things and we were not in alignment with our own code? That would be something that I'd be really interested in as well.
Yeah.
I'm sure maybe it's buried in the report somewhere, but if there's something at the top of your head?
Yeah, we definitely feel like there, there were instances of that occurring. We have our annotated copy of the draft of, of your code here, trying to look to see if there was anything.
It's okay if you don't have it right at the top of your head, but that would be my biggest, so my biggest concern, I think I might have been the one who suggested we get additional analysis on this, and I'm glad we did because it looks like there's, you've identified a lot of areas where we can improve our zoning code and get it updated. Was simplify it?
Simplifying is the biggest, like.
Make it more consistent?
Yep.
And make sure it's legal.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, those, those are, those are three very big things, of course, you know? But those, I mean, to sum it up, to put the big hat on, you know, put, put the bow on it is, yeah, those three things. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of work involved in, in making sure that that's all being reflected in an updated draft.
So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys, for coming in. Appreciate it very much. Any other questions from anybody? Thank you all. Appreciate it very much. All right. Approval, approval of minutes. So we have the July minutes that still require approval. And Allison, you brought a, a couple of pages in tonight.
Yeah, I have a few proposed amendments for, actually, the July and the August minutes. And if you don't mind, if the commission doesn't mind, I'll just read through this document. The first three pages are for the July minutes. The last page is for August. But if I could just read through them, and then we can go back through and discuss. That way, I can just get it on record in just one bulk, and then we can kind of talk about them. So just with a little bit of background, because it's been a while. Upon reviewing the July 30th, 2025 meeting minutes contained in the October 15th, 2025 P&amp;Z meeting packet alongside the meeting transcript contained in the August 20th, 2025 P&amp;Z meeting deck, and the associated summary of divergences and the summary of agreements and commitments documents, I think the following clarifications and additions are recommended. These proposed amendments are intended to ensure that the official record accurately reflects the full scope of discussions, motions, and votes as they occurred during the meeting. And if you recall, that meeting was the Romanelli &amp; Hughes presentation of their development plan. So that's why I'm, I want it to be accurate. I just want it, because it was kind of a big deal. We don't get to do that very often. So the First Amendment is to the guest section. The names of the individuals presenting on behalf of Romanelli &amp; Hughes, I feel like they should be added. So Gary Smith from G2 Planning and Jim Olin from Romanelli &amp; Hughes. And the rationale for that is the sign-in sheet wasn't attached to our packet. And because it was a public hearing for both a development plan approval and change in zoning district, I think it's important to confirm who was in attendance. And I feel like that's probably a practice we should put in place for every time we have a guest on the agenda that's going to present. Like, if we know somebody is here specifically because they're on the agenda, their name should be listed in the minutes. It's just my, my feedback on that one. Amendment two, clarify the motion language. So replace the summary of motion under the vote with the full language as it was read into record. And that is Commissioner Crouppa moved that the Planning and Zoning Commission vote to recommend that council approve the application as submitted by Romanelli &amp; Hughes on May 2nd, 2025, and revised on July 29th, 2025, and to amend the zoning of approximately 84 acres of land, parcel 4174-200-400-3000, from its current, current zoning of planned commercial and office to planned mixed-use development, and to recommend that council subsequently approve the development plans and the text, including all requested divergences as submitted to the record of this Planning and Zoning Commission meeting dated July 30th, 2025. It just provides a complete motion because I know a lot of time went into actually writing and reading the motion, and, and rather than just having, you know, the motion was made and we voted. I, I would like to see that documented a little more thoroughly. Amendment three is to expand the vote record to replace the abbreviated vote statement with a roll call. So it's just making sure that each of our names is documented with the way we voted on, on that. The rationale for that is it just reflects the full roll call vote as documented in the transcript. Amendment four is the record of exhibits, because there was a handful of them. I would insert the following language before the vote section. Commissioner Crouppa moved to accept Exhibits A through G into public record, seconded by Mayor Kennel, and the motion passed unanimously. And then each exhibit is identified, rather than just saying Exhibits A through G were admitted or approved. So Exhibit A is the original submittal. Exhibit B is a version of the submittal dated May 21st, 2025. Exhibit C is a binder of changes from May 21st and June 18th meetings. Exhibit D is the final submittal for July 30th, 2025. Exhibit E is the email chain regarding the donation, engineering, and grant funding for sidewalks. Exhibit F is the email chain with final markups used in presentation. And Exhibit G is the final version of the development plan submitted July 29th, 2025. It just lists and identifies the exhibits officially entered into the record, and it's consistent with the transcript that we had as a reference. Amendment, Amendment five is clarifying the donation and allocation discussion. If you recall, this was several minutes of very detailed discussion that I don't feel was done justice in the minutes as we have received it. So for the first one, I have it as 5A. It's not really a 5A, but it's just my 5A. Replace, or remove where it says Commissioner Crouppa explained that it would be up to council to direct the funds, and replace it with Commissioner Crouppa explained that council will review which parks and services or sidewalks will receive funding with a donation, and stated that it will go through the way that it's made. That's all documented in the transcript. My comment on this would be that we, during a meeting, we interrupt each other a lot. And oftentimes, we don't let one another finish a sentence or a complete thought. And when you read a transcript, you can see, like, I could see that Carish, that Commissioner Crouppa might have been going down that path, but she never actually got to say, you know, that it's up to council to direct the funds. So to, to put that in the minutes doesn't accurately reflect, reflect what was actually said. I think that's where you were going with it, but. And then the next one is pertaining to mine. It says Commissioner Cherabini-Hilier. I spelled my own name wrong there. Asked the village solicitor, asked if the commissioners, or commission is allowed to weigh, is allowed to weigh in on how the funds are allocated. If council decides to change the use of funds, does that constitute a change in the development plan which would therefore be reviewed by planning and zoning? And I, I went back and reread it. I wasn't asking to ask if we were allowed to. It was more of, will we be asked to? So I would like to replace it with Commissioner Cherabini-Hilier asked the village solicitor whether planning and zoning would have input if council later changed the allocation of donated funds, and whether such a change would constitute a modification to the approved plan. I feel like that better captures where we were going with that conversation. I would remove this comment where it says Village Solicitor Molnar also provided context on the donation, because it doesn't actually give us the context that he provided. It's very truncated, so I would replace it with Um, it's very truncated, so I would replace it with Solicitor Molnar confirmed that any substantive, substantive change affecting the development plan's commitments would require additional review by the commission. That is just how the conversation went. That doesn't mean that's how, uh, reviews will go. I, I think there was a lot of confusion in that conversation. I wrote in the rationale that recognizing that the information offered by the village solicitor during the July 30th, 2025 public hearing regarding council's process of the donation allocation, may have been inaccurate. Um, and this correction that I'm asking for just reflects the, the recorded dialogue and, um, the commission's concerns on how that would be oversight and the, and administrative clarifications. Um, just so that we can recognize the conversation that was had might not actually be the way things proceed, um, if there is a change to that allocation. Amendment six is, um, add tree preservation in the sub-area six discussion. It was left out of the minutes. So I would insert these two comments. Uh, one is that the commissioners discussed preservation of mature trees in the northeast corner of the property. Developer Gary Smith approximated that 40% of the existing trees may be impacted by property lines and agreed to explore creative engineering solutions to retain old growths. Trees were feasible to be addressed during final engineering. And then about the sub-area six, Commissioner Cherabini-Hilier requested clarification on sub-area six land allocations, um, would remain fixed in the event of inheritance or transfer of ownership, and that is the Grozinger, um, 2.6 acres. Um, Mr. Smith confirmed that the restrictions would remain in place through the recorded development. So I wanted to have that captured in the minutes. Um, the rationale for that is it just adds discussion that was documented in the transcript, but omitted from the minutes. Amendment seven is the, add the time of the hearing closure. We just missed that part, so, um, to put that the public hearing concluded at 8:25 Eastern Time. I think that's just something that needs to be in there. And amendment eight is referencing the supporting documents, um, because now there, there's a handful of them. So just making the notation that the supporting material referenced during the, this meeting, um, including the summary of divergences and the summary of agreements and commitments as submitted by Romanelli and Hughes and incorporated by reference into the official record, just to make sure that they're all part of the official record. So those are, um, the points that I wanted to bring up, that I had, um, an issue with on the July 30th minutes, and I'm happy to discuss any of them further if you guys disagree.
Um, thank you for this, Allison. Of course, we want to be as accurate as possible, right? So, um, so I don't have any problem with amendment one, amendment two. I think amendment three, we do have those votes in here. On, uh, under the vote?
I, I think it's just grouped, isn't it grouped, like? And it doesn't, it's just, I think the way I have it is just, you know, Seth voted yes.
You like it better that way?
Yeah.
I have no problem with that. Down to Maulner's comments, 5B, replace bullets, um, the last thing there. I think if we're going, if it's in, and I'm trusting 100% that it's, this is exactly what was said.
It's in the transcript pages 53 through 63.
Not arguing at all, this probably was said, because I know you're accurate.
Yeah.
Um, but he sent a couple of memos following that to correct what he had said in the record.
He sent it with a confidential, super secret, you're not to be shared with anybody, not for public record. So I want it to be shared on public record.
So just so we're clear, that he did, he did send a memo to kind of clear the record in terms of.
He didn't actually make any statements in those that would actually clear it one way or the other. Um, so I just, this is just recognizing that the emails that he sent to us sounded like the process would be different than the conversation he had with us in that meeting.
Yeah, I just think to be complete, we should probably note that.
We can't, because it's super secret, confidential, not for public record.
I will ask him if it's okay, to make it less super confidential. Um, I think just for, just for completeness, if he did correct himself in a memo, I think you all saw it, saw the memo, um, it should be part of the record. And I need to ask him if it's okay. Super, super secret. I don't know if it is, I gotta find out from him if it's super, super secret.
It is, he puts in his, uh, subject header, not for public record. Confidential, not for public record.
So that'd be my, my personal, my only concern about it would be that, that he did come out later with two memos concerning that statement, so.
Well, and that's, this recognizes that what he said later is different than what he said in this meeting. And that's all I'm trying to say. I'm not trying to say that the process will be different because of what, how the conversation went, but just recognizing that when we voted, we understood it to be one way, and after the vote, he explained it to be a different way.
Yeah.
And that's just recognizing that.
Totally agree that, he did.
Yes.
Right, he did, but I think he did clarify it pretty succinctly, right?
Seth, do you have a comment?
Yeah, okay.
No, I was just gonna say that I, I think you're just trying to document how it was said at the time.
Yes.
And that's the way I understand it.
Any other question? Okay. So if we're comfortable with this, I would like to make the motion that we accept the July 30th, uh, meeting minutes with these amendments as discussed and move on from there.
I'll second.
Uh, a motion and a second, we got that recorded, Lauren? Okay, you wanna take the vote, please?
Seth?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
The meeting, uh, minutes for July 30th have been amended, so can we then, uh, vote to approve the minutes?
Yes.
Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
All right, Lauren, you got that?
Seth?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Okay, we have the August 20th minutes in front of us now.
I have an amendment.
Take one second.
So, just for clarification, do I need to go back and, okay?
Yeah.
And then provide a copy to everybody?
And then put those into the record. We shouldn't have to come back and look at them again.
No, it should be done, yeah.
Yeah, but we can distribute it to the commission so they can see them.
Okay, we'll do, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, August 20th.
This one's super fast. And it's just that we also had a public hearing on the August 20th, um, meeting minutes, and we did not document the individual that was here. Um, he signed his name on the sign-in sheet, but I just think because he was here as a, I, somebody that was on the agenda, that we need to list him as, like, also present or a guest.
I think, that was who again?
Travis Birch.
He's on, uh, sign-in sheet here.
Right, I think he should be on the minutes, because that's not always included in our minutes. Um, case in point, the July 30th sign-in sheet is not included in the minutes packet.
Sign-in sheet is part of the minutes that were distributed. He's on it.
He's not on it as a guest.
Oh, okay, got it. Up in, uh, up in this section here.
Yeah. So I make a motion to make that minor adjustment to the August 20th, 2025 meeting minutes to add Travis Birch.
Seth's looking for the minutes, hang on a second. Isn't, it's in the package you had? Flip, if you keep flipping through, right? So.
It's after the sign-in sheet there.
I think, I think the motion is, we have Travis Birch on the sign-in sheet. The sign-in sheet's part of the minutes, but I believe, I don't want to speak for you. I believe, um, Allison feels like he should be put under a guest on the actual minute.
He, he is in the minutes, under the public hearing, um, variance request applicant Travis Birch.
He's right here.
But I just didn't list him as the present.
Yeah, okay.
He's here twice then. Want me to put him a third time?
I think we should be consistent, and if we have somebody attending the meetings with the, with the responsibility to present to the commission, that they should be listed as present, not just mentioned somewhere down the line.
Huh? We can agree to approve it right away, or amend it and approve it. Okay, all right. Well, do we, do we have a motion to amend the August 20th, 2025?
I made the motion.
Second.
Okay. Well, add Travis a third time.
Seth?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
We have a motion to approve the August 20th, 2025, uh, minutes with the, with the modification.
I'll make the motion.
I have a second. I'll second.
Seth?
I'm a little.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Okay. All right, um, uh, commission's been working for quite a while now on demolition language. This has gone through, I don't know how many steps.
This is the 10th version.
10th or more.
Technically, the 11th.
It's been, um, it's been reviewed by, in Maulnar, several times. Been reviewed by, actually, lots of different people, including former Mayor Hopper. Um, so we have in front of us, um, what I'll call the final draft, all right? We'll have Allison kind of take us through it, but, um, I think, following this, I guess, I would encourage us to, um, think about going ahead and moving this towards an open hearing so we can actually, uh, get to a point where we can discuss it and approve it. So you wanna take it?
Um, I think this also aligns with the recommendation we just received from you guys about putting it into, um, Article 4 with the rest of the permits. So this is, would be Article 4.09 demolition permits. The A is purpose and intent. The purpose of this section is to establish a uniform set of standards and procedures for the demolition of residential, commercial, industrial and other structures, regardless of property location and zoning district classification, to ensure zoning compliance, protect neighborhood character and address public safety concerns. B is permit required. No person shall demolish or cause to be demolished any structure in whole or in part without first obtaining a demolition permit from the Village of Galena Planning and Zoning Department. In accordance with this section, in parentheses, this may require a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission, C section four, criteria for approval. I don't know if I'm gonna make it all the way through, so, somebody can be a backup. Yeah. Um, I'm at C.
Application requirements and process. Applicants should feel free to print this page and use this section as a checklist. An application for a demolition permit shall be submitted to the Village of Galena Planning and Zoning Department, and shall include completed zoning permit application, required selections, demolition, grading and stormwater, optional selections if applicable, sewer disconnect modification, reconnection. Notes, if demolition is part of a new construction project, the demolition permit may be included in the zoning permit application. A separate demolition application is not required. A site plan or markup indicating the structures to be demolished. A statement of the intent for post-demolition use describing how the site will be used or restored after demolition. Example, grading and seeding, new construction, et cetera. Renderings or proposed replacement structures if applicable. Include visual representation of any planned structures. Note, approval of the demo, of the demolition permit does not constitute approval of the statement of intent in the renderings of the proposed replacement structures. These two requirements exist to ensure that there is a plan in place for the property, whether it be finished grading and seeding or construction of a new, uh, new structure. Copies of approved grading and stormwater permits or proof of application if, if obtained separately. A mailing list of property owners located within 200 feet of the proposed demolition project required only if a public hearing is necessary. The application process will consist of the following. Submittal of application and supporting materials, ideally at the same time as zoning permit application, submittal can be done on the same application. And take review by the Planning and Zoning Department, ensuring completion of application packet and coordination of additional needed materials. If necessary, public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission. Four, uh, notice of approval, denial and invoicing of applicable fees. See fee schedule on the village website. Five, for approved permits, issuance of the demolition permit upon receipt of payment. Somebody pitch in, help me. Thank you.
E, bud. Or let's see, D, criteria for approval. A demolition permit may be granted in the following conditions are met. One, the proposed demolition complies with all zoning and land use regulations. Two, the applicant provides a clear plan for site restoration, redevelopment or mitigation of impacts. A, note, approval of the demolition permit does not constitute approval of this plan. This requirement exists to ensure that there is a plan in place for the property, whether it be finished grading and seeding or construction of a new structure. Three, the structure is not designated as a historical landmark by any recognized authority. Example, National Register of Historical Places, Ohio Historical Society, et cetera.
Can I make a jump in really quickly? That was one thing that, um, that was something that got missed. It's, it's actually the Ohio History Connection. It's not, it's no longer called the Ohio Historical Society.
Four, age of structure. A, if the structure is less than 75 years old as of January 1st of the current application year, it may be eligible for administrative review. B, if the structure is 75 years or older, a public hearing before Planning and Zoning Commission is required. C, non-residential structures, regardless of age, also require a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission. D, accessory structures such as sheds, garages, et cetera, of any age may be approved administratively and do not require a public hearing. Five, if the structure is damaged by fire, storm or other event of force. Major, 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 help me with that, guys. That's 67 years old, that's a new one, major. And the insurance company has declared a total loss, the demolition may be approved.
E, public hearings. Demolition permit applications that require public hearing will follow the same review and approval process as a variance request as outlined in Article 7, variances of the Village of Galena zoning code. F, conditions of demolition. One, proper disposal of debris must be in accordance with local, state and federal environmental laws. Two, all utilities must be disconnected safely before demolition begins. Three, site restoration, including grading and erosion control measures, must be completed within 15 days of demolition and be done in accordance with the applicant's approved grading and stormwater permits. Four, compliance with any additional requirements set by the Planning and Zoning Department and/or commission, uh, underscore, these conditions shall be noted in the approved demolition permit. And then G, enforcement and penalties. All violations and penalties shall be conducted in accordance with Article 3.09, enforcement of violations of the Village of Galena zoning code. H, appeals. All appeals regarding demolition permits shall be conducted in accordance with Article 6, appeals of the Village of Galena zoning code. Note, an approved demolition permit may be transferred with the sale of the property. A new owner shall not be required to reapply. However, the requirements of this section shall continue to apply to any new owners. I find it interesting that our experts called out our demolition language tonight, um, and here we are.
I have one question.
Of course.
Um, in the, uh, age of structure, uh, B, is it possible, if the structure is like really sound, like, let's say it's just old, but it's sound, and there's enough to, you can do, you know, change the inside all you want, um, and we don't believe it needs to be demolished? Um, can we have them submit a, a plan for, um, for them to, um, submit a plan to rehab it?
I think that gets really complicated, um, what you might want to save and somebody else doesn't want to save.
And I get that.
I think, I think what we would, could do, um, when we more clearly define our historic section is put in different demolition or more specific demolition requirements specific to whatever that district ends up being, um, but this one for, you know, is for the entire district.
Okay.
Just, that's a good clarification, Allison. This, this is intended to fall under our general development standards, so it really fits across all of our, our planned districts. Um, I think.
I think, I think there is something we need to add. I should have come up with this, what, six months ago? Um, I think, depending on how you guys feel about this, I can work on it, but I think we need to put in something about, um, a performance bond may be required, um, in the event that the work stops. So, you know, this doesn't end up like a Parks and Rec episode with a big open pit that we fight about forever.
I would not be opposed to that if you want to work that in.
That sounds good.
Okay, so, um, we also in your packet have, we've been collecting up a couple of changes to the zoning code.
I have one minor edit.
Oh, please, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I have one minor edit on the, the thing that Kathy read about the force-
Where's this at? Oh, the force majur.
Event of force majur. I don't even know what that means.
We could pick a different word.
No.
So like a-
I was just going to say, or other weather event.
Act of nature. So basically, um, I, I looked into this, and the reason I went with that term was it incum, it incorporates more than just weather. It can also be arson, things like that, so.
Okay, all right.
There's a reason. There's a reason.
I need to increase my vocabulary.
I, I really fought hard to get rid of force majur, and I lost.
I didn't know either. I, I had no idea when you brought that in. Um, also in your package is a collection of additional changes that we've been discussing for the last six or so months. Um, I'm going to have, um, our zoning inspector just, just highlight what those changes are, and then my, my proposal would be bring all of these up front to an open hearing at one time. All right? All right. You want to go through those real quick, Matt?
Yeah. I believe we talked about all of these the first time. We thought we were ready to go through all the demolition stuff and have a hearing and everything else. Um, so this should be just a quick review. Um, one, we just need to fix the table of contents. I saw one day that it was all screwed up, so that's a pretty straightforward correction. On page 44 of the zoning code, there's a citation error. It points to the wrong section, and I have a note there, the section it should be corrected to. Very simple again. Um, let's see here. Uh, this is just another citation mistake on page 57. Um, this will get corrected to call off the right one. Okay. Um, page 101, this incorporates all the changes that we talked about, um, when we were going through, uh, the hard pool covers issue. Um, and this does agree with the, um, other section.
Matt, can you just go back and do the context on this? Because I think we have at least one commission member that wasn't here, and we discussed this.
So when we were going through everything with, um, the hard pool covers, we had three residences that were either granted, um, a permit for a hard pool cover, or already had them because they were allowed to be there. Um, and that was a, a administrative mistake for them being granted those. So we were trying to figure out, okay, what do we do? Do we let them keep it? Do we force them to put up a fence? Do we take out insurance policies, whatever else we need to do? Um, we determined that they could be grandfathered in. All future projects would require a fence, and if they want to do a hard pool cover, fine, but it doesn't absolve the project of the need for a fence. Um, and then we noticed that the fence heights in the two sections were different, so we wanted to make those agree. Um, and that, that's basically what it comes down to. Does that help?
So those are the proposed changes to the zoning code that we would want to bring forward into an open hearing. Uh, because of the short months, we would not be able to have that open hearing until our December meeting.
We can do it.
Correct?
No, we're good, because the next one's on the-
Are you in time?
Yeah.
So our next meeting, we can do that?
Next meeting's on the 19th.
Oh, fantastic.
So we've got time.
So if there's no strong objections, we'll move forward with an open hearing in our next meeting and go through these things and- Yeah. Our next zoning, our next zoning meeting.
November.
November.
I think, I'm in, I think I'm in Texas.
Yeah.
Karen and I are going, Karen and I are going to Texas.
No. No.
No what?
The day before you're making the turkey.
My birthday's the 20th.
So it's a great birthday present.
That's what I thought. I told the kids, don't.
All right. We will schedule an open hearing for one of our upcoming meetings to be determined. How's that? Okay, okay. All right. Matt, you have a zoning report for us tonight?
Sure. You can do that. Um, all right. For Miller Farm, Section One, um, all the public infrastructure is completed up to the pump station. Um, they're actually in the process of finishing everything in the pump station, making sure it's operational now. Um, there are now 28 of 33 parcels in Section One that are in some stage of the permitting process. Um, moving forward into Section Two, um-
Can you hang on one second?
Sure.
I haven't, I haven't found the zoning report. So those are the minutes of August 20th, minutes.
Oh.
I don't have it. I don't have it. We don't have the zoning report.
I can read slower if that helps.
Yeah, I didn't see it either. Nobody has it.
Do you have one?
Where? Hang on, hang on. I have July 2025. No, I don't have it. I don't have it. You don't have it. That's not the zoning report. That's 20, that's- Hey, I was confused the night too, so I'm fine. I mean, we are crazy. Yeah, not for that, but not for that reason. Yeah. If you can think of a better word, I think the commission would be open to it, because your point of being clear and concise, I think, is muddled by a word that nobody knows. Yeah. I tried to give that feedback, so I think as a commission, we need to override force majur and think of a better word.
All right, can I go? All right. Um, you want me to start over? Okay. So, um, for Miller Farm, Section One, public infrastructure is all complete up to the pump station. Um, pump station construction's ongoing. They're finishing everything up now to make it operational. Um, there are actually 28 of 33 parcels currently in some stage of the permitting process, um, with as-built for final grading coming in continuously. Um, Columbia Gas completed the mainline installation. They're doing, um, all the service lines as the houses come up. Uh, for Section Two, all the improvement plans for phases A, B, and C have been approved and construction's underway. Uh, KEM's inspector is there daily, making sure they're doing what they're supposed to do. Um, right-of-way permits for Columbia Gas installation in all Section Two phases have been issued. Um, and there is currently a huge backlog of permit submittals that I am most of the way through, but there, I guess there's another round getting ready to come my way. Um, so there's, I think, 10 basement digs over the next two weeks, so things are, things are moving along. Um, for Section Three, the construction plans have been approved and everything's underway, and again, KEM's there every day checking on the work. Um, I just got a request from the Delaware County Map Room for address assignments today, so I should be getting those in the next couple of weeks. Um, as you know, for development plans, um, Arrowhead's the big item on the agenda right now, and the final reading is scheduled for the October 26 council meeting. Um, for applications and inquiries, um, I have not heard anything else from 185 North Walnut Street about the second driveway opening, so I'm assuming that they don't want to do it. Um, for both the Bright Speed and Alta Fiber Village-wide fiber installations, um, one permit's been approved. The other one, they just sent me the payment stuff today, so I'll be sending them their permits, and both of those projects, as part of a condition of approval, they have to wait until the Harrison Street project is finished, and they can't mess with anything in that project. Um, and then from there, it's just a bunch of permits, so nothing too exciting.
So we have two fiber optics companies who are coming into, um-
Competition, baby.
So basically, from what I gather of it, they've already got service here. It's just a matter of upgrading what's present.
What's the timeline?
Uh, should-
For it to be open and ready for community?
That's a great question. I think that they said construction will take, I think, six to eight weeks, something like that, so.
Uh, is this above ground, below ground? What's-
Both.
Both?
Uh, yeah. In areas where they're already underground, they're going underground.
Where they're already underground? Okay.
Are these included in our right-of-way to where they pay us a fee and collect annually?
Yep.
It's being included? Okay.
Remember Alta Fiber wanted us to waive that.
Do, um, Matt, do we know, um, where, if we have any of the homes completed? Am I?
Am I?
Yeah.
Miller Farm.
Miller Farm, I mean. I mean, it's all, it's all-
There's a lot of them completed.
How, how many do we know?
There's currently two that are moved into and two that are serving as models, and there's-
Two occupied.
Yeah, and then there's like three or four more that are just about to get closed, so. What's that?
There's about 20 underway or completed.
Yeah, there's about 30 more going to happen in Section Two in the next couple of weeks, so it's moving.
Yes, sir.
Zach Hopper, 275 Harrison Street. When discussing the telecom, you're talking about them already having service here? Which companies?
Um, I believe Bright Speed is already here. Um, if they, if they're here, they would have come in as part of Century Link, if I remember correctly. Um, I think I've got that right.
We've got Spectrum on our poles, and that's it.
Is that it?
Stand, and Bright Speed, they're already here, and I think it's for, uh, for phone, if I'm not mistaken. We can get a note out on it. Bright, Bright Speed's already in the building.
And there should be nothing underground at all.
There's undergrounds in the new subdivisions.
In the new subdivisions? Okay.
Right, they'll be replacing existing lines with fiber. Um, so, when they say village-wide, it's slightly inaccurate, because your neighborhood's out of luck, but- But it's everywhere else. Um-
Yeah, we, I don't, we ain't got none of that.
Well, um, if I remember correctly, isn't, um, isn't Bright Speed a DSL provider? So that would go through phone lines? I think that's how that works out.
All I know is we got Spectrum on our poles. I don't know who all-
Yeah, well, there you go. You're going to get it now.
Because to our knowledge, only-
Yeah. I might be misunderstanding something there, but-
Yeah, because if they're here already, that means they did a lot of illegal shenanigans.
Well, that, all I can say is, uh, they're doing it right now, so that's good. Um, if they, if they are replacing existing infrastructure, but I don't know what infrastructure this is to be replacing. Right. But anyhow, they're all, it's all permitted. It's all gone through KEM for making sure it's all being done correctly, so we'll be good. Uh, yeah, they're, you're on the list.
We voted down because they wanted special permitting and not to pay for right-of-ways.
I voted it down because they were not doing mine development.
This is different than that exclusive agreement that was voted on earlier in the year.
Is there anything else? Yeah. All right. Do we have anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll second.
All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
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 All right, we're adjourned at, what is that? 8:47 PM.
Oh my God, I'm so sore. I'm ready to have a house that has horsehair, plaster horsehair. Well, um, one of my houses, yeah, I'm thinking of a bathroom. Oh, yeah. They, they put plaster in it. It's old, but they put plaster in the, in the, and they put horsehair in the plaster.